Review and the February 19, 2020 regular meeting minutes of the city council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And take that as unanimous. Okay, I have no petition for communications. So we'll go right to the mayor's report. First item is approve the appointment of Vicki Brostrup. Is that the correct way to say it?
Yeah.
Or Struck or Stratt?
Brostrup.
Struck, excuse me. As the county representative to the city planning board.
Love to approve.
Second. It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Matt. And a discussion. Since you stepped by, would you mind getting up and describing yourself just a little? Not to put you under pressure.
We can see you all. I'm Vicki Brostrup and um.
Could you use the microphone?
Ooh, okay.
Just because we get while we do it in minutes and it's better to hear.
I'm Vicki Brostrup. I grew up in Big Sandy, Montana. Moved to Belgrade, married. Moved to Miles City to a different ranch. At that time, I became a county commissioner for Custer County. But before that, I was on the city county planning board in Miles City and was very instrumental in separating them to county and county planning board and city planning board and was chairman of the county planning board when we first started. And I have since then moved back to Belgrade, then to Dillon here. Been married for a year and a half. So I'm an old newlywed. I believe in planning and I believe spent a lot of years in Belgrade and they did not plan. And you can tell by their planned, unplanned organization. And I always use that as an example in Custer County of what not to do. But I, you know, some of those terms will come back to me. I kind of stuck them out in that field. But I appreciate you accepting or accepting who I am.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for your room? Call for questions. Questions been called for to approve the appointment of Vicki Brostrup. As county representative to the city planning board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And take that as unanimous.
Thank you.
We're having a meeting tomorrow night if you want to come. Right here. Right here. It's seven o'clock, I think it is, right?
Yes, it's seven. And we're gonna throw you to the fire real quick.
Better call the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the approval of the February 20, 2020 community affairs committee meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. I really don't have to probably approve, but we'll do it. And that was Dan, moved Russ or Matt? Or Matt.
No, I didn't know.
Actually, John. I think it's actually the nineteen-three guy that ran over there. Minutes are right. Any discussion on it? Looks like it actually committed. Yeah, it actually turned out really good.
Think the mayor's gonna get involved in that bull rating.
I don't think so.
I'll pay his entry fee.
I was in the dunk tank and I'm still spitting in water out of my nose.
Actually looks like fun, so we expect sticks out of the eight council people to be there.
They'll be happy to observe the ratings.
I'm one of the observation people, so.
Call for the question. Questions we call for to approve the February 19, 2020 committee affairs committee meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And take that as unanimous. Okay, next item is library board. Matt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the packet you'll see that we have minutes for January 29, 2020. I ask for your approval.
Love to accept.
Second. Been moved by Russ, seconded by Dan to accept. The discussion.
Do we have a number of the library here? To the best of my knowledge, I am not aware of one. Financial warrants might move.
That should be fucking Matt.
Oh, that was me.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was typo.
We'll change it here and we'll tell Lori to change it to reflect correctly. Any others? Call for the question. Questions been called for to accept the January 29, 2020 meeting minutes of library board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. Unanimous. Anything else?
Uh, I would like to share, it's a little ahead of schedule. It'll come out in the next meeting minutes, next month. But our library was nominated or won library of the year for the state of Montana, which is pretty cool. Mayor has done fabulous job. So kudos go out to her. That's kind of why she'd be here, but maybe at the next one.
Okay.
We want it.
And we agree.
Debbie's porridge won our award too, didn't she? I believe so, yeah. We've got a few things that are coming up this next month in Missoula in which they'll be all recognized for all the things. Pretty neat things happening at the library right now.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay. Next item, city attorney, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Uh, well, the misdemeanor work is still there. It's always there. It's never gone away. Uh, I would like to comment that the new flash drive is, I think, for some of the discovery in particular seem to be a little bit more efficient to work with. And so I've been happy to see that. I received a 368-page deposition in the sex case today to review. We'll be reading that, share over coffee and donuts. And we will be proceeding again with some collection efforts on some silver accounts. Still working on some of those. Working on various planning zoning items as a moment ago demonstrated. I want to share there's still a workshop set for the afternoon of March 16th with Kelly Lynch from the Townsend Cities. I haven't heard that she's canceled yet, so I haven't heard she's coming either. So I think it sounds like it's a goal, but I'll put a feeler out there just to make sure. But that's coming up here shortly. It'll be before the next council meeting on the 18th. I will be attending a municipal civil liability conference in Missoula on March 12th. So with that, if you'd like to take questions.
Okay, thank you. He's gonna head out. He has another appointment too.
We need to experience another endangerment.
Planning board, Mr. Hand.
There's no minutes in your packet, so there's no official report. We do have a meeting tomorrow night. Seems like pretty full of general work. We're happy to have new members. That can lead to my report.
Thank you.
You all have to say that after the meeting.
Zone you board choose, I don't care.
No minutes, no report.
There you go. Thank you. We'll get Raymond next time. Third corporation, Mr. Hazelbaker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of real quick things. With spring being here, crews are getting ready for spring activities. They've been out filling some potholes with coal mix. But we'll be getting the dirt patcher here soon. We'll get after the potholes and the other holes, whatever we can find to fill. Water departments, a project coming up, the leak detection, something we did about two years ago. We can do it again this year. A firm out in Kalispell, lucky coming down and they go through the city looking for leaks in the main lines. And I think last time, I think out of 130 they checked, I think there were four that they found. They didn't relook at it closer. And one reason we do it now, it has to be done before people start turning on their sprinkler systems, logging systems, because if once that starts happening, you can't do it because of the sound. And then also just bus report for the month of January, we got 829 riders. 233 of them were over the age of 60. 402 disabled and 194 under the age of, or 59 and younger. So, goodness, quite busy. Yeah, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Score?
That I do not have. Do you have? No, okay. No, I do not know the score of the basketball game.
Do you want me to go and call it that?
Probably best not.
Mr. Mayor, so when they do the leak detection and they found four last time, is that something that you fix then in the summer?
Yes.
So is that a big time for them to check? There's the, the businesses over on Montana Street that include, it's both Montana and the side street and they include Rebecca's and Senior Citizens Center. That block, I'm not quite sure what block that is. But there's, those are the ones that have had problems with water in the basement when there's, when the sewers are hydro flushed. And you were thinking that maybe there was a leak in the line close to there?
Do they constantly monitor those sewer lines? Yes, this is for the, just the water.
Just the water lines?
It's just the water lines.
Okay.
They come in and check.
Any others?
But the other ones, that area, yes, they, about once we go through and check the sewer lines to make sure that they're not being backed up. And that's one of those things, if those businesses are having that, they need to let us know. Because we haven't had any written reports from any of those spots in quite a while.
I thought it was on the, at the last meeting.
Yeah, we had one on Manning Street, yes.
Right, on Manning, okay.
But this is two blocks away from.
Right. Okay, and I will make sure that they let me know. But this, but this wouldn't help that situation at all, right?
No, it wouldn't.
It wouldn't, okay. That's where you have to actually go in and get there is a leak in the sewer system and repair the sewer line.
Yeah, we would evaluate to see what the, what is, if it's a break or something that's come loose. We have a camera that we can set up the line and it's pretty cool to see if you ever get a chance. The guys are doing that. Then they can evaluate what the situation is. If it's just a break, then they can sometimes clear it out using some different equipment. Or if it's an actual leak, a break, then they would have to dig it up.
Any other questions?
And they, and they don't like to dig it up.
Man, told us the shade job. I shouldn't have said that.
You said it, I did.
You'll be in the minutes.
Police Department, Mr. Guy, Chief Guy.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have no report. I did, I believe I sent in the January report that that was in the first week of February. So I don't know if it made this, maybe she probably forgot about it before. So I'll, I'll give it in the next, next month. But I have no, no report, but I'll, if you want to have me answer any questions.
Actually, this month makes me.
What's that?
This is the first meeting every month.
Right, but I had it in January. I had the January report, but I sent this like in the February or something, so, for January. So I thought it'd make it in this one, but it didn't.
Any questions for? How's your search for the new officer?
Um, it's good. We have, we have, is it the 19th? We have interviews on the 19th.
Yes. Seem like a good pool of applicants?
Of course. Be terrible if I said no and then we hired somebody.
I guess all I intended to do is get a lot of applicants.
We had a lot of applicants, yeah. We had, I think we had 20 something applicants or something like that, which, you know, and then you have to do cuts and then it comes down. So, yeah, we're, we're getting there.
Good, yes, you had some solutions to look at anyway.
Hopefully, yeah, yeah, we do.
Okay, thank you. Fire Department, Fire Chief Russ.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report. I did submit my, our calls for last month, but I've seen they're not in the thing. So they'll be here next month, our next meeting. We did have a meeting last night. We're having elections next month for the officers at the fire department. So there will be a new fire chief and a new assistant chief. Not at the next, not at your guys' next meeting, but our meeting, your, the council meeting is before the fire meeting. So the second meeting in March or April, then you'll have to, you'll be sworn in a new chief and assistant chief.
Okay. Did you look over the MOU?
I did. I, I have no, but that, yeah.
Did they have a problem?
I, we haven't had a district meeting that will be.
Well, no, fire department.
Oh, no.
No. Okay.
That's all good.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions for? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
City Court, Judge Meyer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Very nice to see everyone. I'm gonna pass out some colored graphs. I will double down on my efforts to make sure that they are all scanned in and color and printed in color. These are the last minute, and I apologize for the inconvenience.
Love to accept the January 20, 2020.
Okay. Uh, we just made motion, Dan seconded. Discussioners, both. Now we'll get into the discussion.
I have nothing to add. It's all in the report, ladies and gentlemen. And as promised though, I did include the receipts graph. And that's the very last graph on page 22. And I think that's the last of the promised financial deep dive that we were gonna do for this, this cycle. But as always, I'm very, very happy to look into additional issues, one-on-one or with the council as a whole.
Thank you for the legend in here. Thank you for the legends. It's not always before, remember that helps dramatically.
That was just for you, Mr. Hand. And actually, on Mr. Hand and myself, I did not know what one of the abbreviations was. And I think that was the one you asked me last time we were in a meeting. And I looked it up and I go, oh yeah, landlord tenant, duh. So anyhow, no, I just provided that for future information for folks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for the color. Yeah, because I couldn't tell the white.
Saying, where does that go?
Yes, Mr. Knight. No, I totally understand, ladies and gentlemen. And on that note, how far back do you guys want to keep seeing on a monthly basis? I mean, we've got here all the way to 2014.
1842.
It's a little further than our wall notes that we've been keeping records, so.
Okay, 1894. Probably just last.
Can I just start with statehood? Like, what is it, 1899, I believe? Anyhow, thanks so much. But yes, can you guys, any questions? I'm happy to answer.
I noticed you got a black Samsung phone as a defendant in one of the cases.
Oh, excuse me, sir?
Yeah, your black Samsung phone was one of the defendants.
Oh.
What, does that phone have problems in it?
Look at the ledger.
Does it help?
Look at the letters next to it on the ledger. He'll see an SW, search warrant case. We found about 50 archived search warrant cases. But as Chief Baberson knows, every single search warrant must be properly entered. And so we did a lot of that last month. And this is from well before. These are from back into the 90s, some of them. So, yeah, but we're just gonna do that. We just, every single time we find a problem, we tackle it and we just get it fixed to the best of our ability.
And also there was one, there was a defendant and a plaintiff, and that was it. So I assumed it was an underage case or something.
Well, defendants and plaintiffs usually is a civil matter. But, but yes, yes.
I would assume it's a protection order.
Exactly, yes, yes. Or a contract issue or something like that. Or, or as Mr. Dolan noted, it could be one of our collection cases. But of course, that would be City of Dillon, so.
This one is a state of Montana versus no defendant.
Which page are you on, sir?
On page eight, towards the bottom of the page.
Yes, I believe that's a shell case. Just like I told you before, sometimes there were cases that were opened up, yep. Uh, there were cases that were opened up and that were not completed as far as the intake or the entry of information and/or parties. And in my recollection of closing out that case, as you can see, way back in January 16th, that was a shell case. There was just no information entered into the system.
Okay, so the one on the next page is the same one. Assuming the top third there.
Yes, sir.
No defendant and no defendant.
Yes, again, just improper data entry and look at the dates. I mean, that was a long, long time ago. And that's actually when this system was, was pretty close to being brand new. So I think there was a bit of a learning curve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to commend the judge on, I mean, I'm absolutely amazed at the amount of cases that are closed. Just incredible amount of cases. How, how's it looking now? I mean, are you almost, can you see the desk? I mean, can you see the end of the tunnel?
Absolutely. And one of the most instrumental persons in that process is actually sitting right to your left or directly to your left. She's, she's been instrumental in helping us go through these cases when her workload allows. But yes, it's Diane, Christina and myself. We are probably through about half of 2014 now. And Diane has brought us up going the other way from the early 2000s. So it's, it's still ongoing. It's gonna take a little bit longer. And we're, the end is in sight though, because we really have a good process for getting the audits. I'm gonna call it an internal audit is what I'm gonna call it. That's what we're doing. We're going through every single case, looking at every single piece of paper in the case now. And we're properly adding dispositions where needed. We're returning bond money still, no joke, from all these years. And we're closing them most of the time, as you can see on our notes.
Yeah, it is incredible. So thank you both.
Same to Diane.
How'd you know that's something cases in here?
Oh, you know, yeah, yeah, that's, that's something that they track. And I don't know why I keep it on my limited court, limited jurisdiction court, but they do. But, and if we ever see a number on that, Mr. Hand, please alert the authorities.
I see some names on here that I know of.
Okay, my name's not on there too much.
Remember, we've had a police chief, some less to report to.
Well, if there are no further questions, I will just, for the next few months, just kind of condense some of my reporting, so it's not so luminous, because it's just gonna be the same stuff over and over. And I'm always here, always happy to answer questions as they do arise. So I'll try to, I noticed 23 pages is a little long. I'm gonna try to get it down to like 10. Yes. Great.
Couple of questions.
Questions we call for to assess the January 20, 20 court report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, city tractors not here. Tree board. Let me see the minutes.
No, there aren't any minutes. There, the tree board met last night, so the minutes will be in the next packet.
Good, thank you. Okay, report sustains committees of the city council judiciary, Mr. Nunn.
Yes, well, there's no meeting, no reports, but I'm assuming we'll be having a meeting this month.
Yes.
Next week sometime.
No, the weekend.
Weekend, okay.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee, Mr. Hand. Before you leave your packet, you have our minutes from our February 27th meeting. Ask for your acceptance.
Love to approve. Second.
It's been moved by Russ and seconded by Matt. Discussion. I heard a question we called for.
Call for a call for the question.
Questions we call for, all those want to approve the February 27, 2020 meeting minutes of finance committee, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous. Okay, we have four item reports here. One is approve the line item budget report for February. Approve the fund summary claims. Approve claims by vendor and approve budget versus actual all of February 2020.
Love to approve as presented. Second.
It's been moved by Russ, it's taken Raymond, it's, or the Rich? Okay, Rich. And discussion.
Call for the question.
Questions we call for to approve the line item budget report for February 2020. Approve the fund summary for claims for February 2020. Approve the claims by vendor report for February 2020. And approve the budget versus actual report for February 2020. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And take that as unanimous. Anything else, Don?
No, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire in order, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you leave your minutes from February 27, 2020 for your approval.
Move to accept. Second. Been moved by John, seconded by Matt. Discussion.
Basically, when it's decided, you can see the draft that we're currently working on. And that'll be a three-way agreement, wasn't it, by ours?
And that's the one I was asking the fire department with that. Now the next one would be fire district.
Correct.
And then it'll come back to the city.
The fire department does the science? Is it just the mayor and the fire district saying that?
Yes.
Is there a question about the minutes approval? Call for question. Questions we call for to approve the February 27, 2020 meeting minutes of fire in order committee, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous.
Thank you, that completes my report.
Thank you. Health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you. For February 27th, bring your approval.
Move to approve. Second. Been moved by Dan, seconded by Matt. Discussion.
Sure, we're currently still working on the independent contract. We're currently having two versions. And I need to point out that I myself personally did not know of any audit that may or shall take place as noted in the minutes. And it was noted in the Dillonite Daily today.
That what?
Well, in here it says if the city ends up being audited by Area 5. And then ironically today, it was in the Dillonite Daily noting that we've been audited three times. And as the chairman of this committee, I had no way of knowing that that may or may not take place. So I just want people to know that that did not come from me. Thank you.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, have we been audited three times?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that either.
Yes, we've been audited, well, the audit you guys have all seen. We've been audited by FURS and we passed that. And then we've been audited by MDOC bus, we passed that. And then this said that it's very likely we might be audited in Area 5. And then this said that it's very likely we might be audited in Area 5. And I have no doubt we'll pass that.
So, by the way, since it's a busy committee, we're looking at that. And also, we're looking into the impact of wildlife. Four-legged, not two-legged in the city.
Call for a question. Questions we call for to approve the February 27th, 2020 meeting minutes of the Health and Welfare Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Cemetery Committee, Mr. Kenworthy.
I was on vacation. I don't believe we had a meeting while I was gone. Did we?
Life did go on, but.
Yes. What we missed, but it's okay.
Like a toothpick, did you?
Yeah, there was a bit of commentary after the last council meeting under one of the items that the cemetery committee proposed doing, that's to replace the briar. Now, I understood that we were to poll around and see if that was supposed to be a city piece of equipment or if that was supposed to be an undertaker's piece of equipment. I did make those phone calls and basically what it boils down to is that if you have a manned cemetery, the cemetery provides that as a service. So that we went ahead and ordered the briar. The notes reflected, we used to have it without doing that review, but that review was carried out prior to that. Wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, Julie called me back after our meeting. And we had a long conversations. We went over all the specifics and she explained everything. Well, I'm satisfied.
Good. Okay, we'll move on. And we will have one Monday.
Yes.
But we'll get that out tomorrow. Uh, Parks Committee, Mr. Rourke.
Uh, before you read the minutes from the February 26th, Parks and Playground Committee meeting.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Matt, discussion.
Uh, just a question. In the middle of item two on the line, it says council on May 1st, 2019 was approved. The next sentence, now the city has entered into a lease agreement with Little League on Ray Lynch Park. Is that correct or is that the city is working on a lease agreement?
No, the city has, has already approved the lease agreement between Beaverhead Little League and Ray Lynch Park. So because they've done, because we've done that, uh, the MOU from last year was a MOU between Beaverhead Little League and for the use of Vigilante and Ray Lynch. So Beaverhead Little League wanted us to redo the MOU and take out Ray Lynch Park, just League and Vigilante Park. So that was the MOU that was before the committee.
You took out Ray Lynch Park?
Thought it was Ray Lynch that they were.
Uh, Ray Lynch is already taken care of by virtue of a lease agreement the city has with Beaverhead Little League.
Oh.
So.
The recent one that you approved.
The MOU that came before the Parks Committee was just for operations. It, it talks about who will unlock the bathrooms, who will clean the bathrooms, who will pick up and empty the garbage on a daily basis. So that agreement with Beaverhead Little League is just concerning Vigilante Park. Ray Lynch Park has, is not involved with that MOU anymore, any longer.
Okay, so the Ray Lynch Park part, that should probably be stripped then.
It is.
Not in minutes here. Now the city's entered into a lease agreement with Little League on Ray Lynch Park.
Uh, I'm trying to figure out where you are in here.
Well.
It's gone, it's because of that new agreement that the existing agreement with the Little Leagues, which covered both Ray Lynch and Vigilante, has to be redone so that it's just Vigilante.
Right, but this indicates that we have on Ray Lynch Park as well.
Which is true.
We do. We approved it at the last city council meeting.
Okay, not really. We have two separate agreements with them, one for Ray Lynch all by itself and one for Ray Lynch and Vigilante. They want to strike Ray Lynch off of the other lease. Off of the other agreement. So it's only for Vigilante.
How about if we insert, uh, therefore between Park and this? Okay to me.
Okay, and that would, or even put just a comma. Uh, now, or, and we could change the word now to currently. Currently, the city has entered into a lease agreement with the Little League on Ray Lynch Park. Therefore, this agreement, meaning the MOU, had to be redone for the city and Little League with Vigilante Park. Instead of maybe with Vigilante Park, including or exclusive of, or inclusive of Vigilante Park.
No, I think it's good just to add. Yeah, inserting the therefore that works to our command.
Or just a period behind Park and put the MOU instead of disagreement.
Right, okay. That's, yeah, just a period and then the MOU.
Instead of disagreement, just put the MOU had to be redone.
Okay.
Well, that's still an open agreement, open question as to how it's gonna be redone whether that MOU or otherwise. So disagreement, I think, is generic enough that it encompasses both.
So when it's all done, the Little League will, will have an agreement with Vigilante or Ray Lynch Park?
They will.
Both, both.
Uh, Beaverhead Little League will have two agreements with the city. It will have an agreement for the lease of Ray Lynch Park.
Yeah.
And that's, that's one agreement, lease of Ray Lynch. Then I'll have a second agreement that's called an MOU. And it'll just include the operations of Vigilante Park.
Okay, so how's that fit in with what the softball crew wants to do?
Uh, that is the softball crew.
Softball.
Beaverhead Little League is the softball crew.
Ah, okay, I thought they're two separate ones, alright.
Softball's part of the Ray Lynch agreement.
Yeah, they're. Okay, thank you. That makes it a whole lot simpler. Any other corrections?
Yes, please. Same paragraph, the last sentence. The motion failed with one. Aye. That's a creative word.
AYU?
Yeah.
I looked it up.
That's correct.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, just one clarification. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any others?
Call for a question.
Questions we call for to approve the February 26th, 2020 meeting minutes of the Parks Committee as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous.
Well, I notice you mentioned a fence in there between the college and the city. I assume that's to keep the beer-drinking football players out of the city park.
Well, that might be, that might be an added benefit. Um, actually, it's because Nick has mentioned that especially on game day, uh, when the cars and trucks pull in, uh, they oftentimes snub way far over to the west and they impede on the park. And they actually, last year, were parked on the brand-new sod that had been laid at the skate.
Skate park.
Skate park. So, yeah, as, I mean, if you go down and you'll notice that there already is a fence. Uh, oh, I don't know, probably 50 feet. But that fence needs to be extended all the way up. And Nick believes that he has the equip, he has enough fencing. He'll need a little bit more materials. And he wanted us to put it on our, kind of our list that will come to the appropriations when Finance is doing appropriations for next year. I think he believes it'll cost approximately $8,000 to complete that fence.
Is that just gonna be a four-foot fence or an eight-foot, like, or a six-foot, I mean, like, the outside?
I think it'll be, I think he wants to complete it at the six-foot level. And I think what's there is a six-foot, right?
No, it's four.
Yeah, you think it's?
It's four. Well, if that's skate park, it's only a four, I believe.
We'll have to see. Well, he hasn't presented that project yet.
Alright, I just saw it, I was wondering. So, thank you.
Okay, moving on. City Health Committee, Mr. Hand. I made this novel report. I'm assuming we'll be having a meeting here in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll maybe the next week after, yeah. City Hall Committee, Mr. Nighy.
Uh, no report, but we did have a meeting on Monday. Um, so we'll have minutes for the next meeting.
Yep, thank you. Water and Sewer Committee, Mr. Hand.
Okay, in your packet you'll see we have minutes from our Water and Sewer Committee meeting from February 18th. Ask for your acceptance.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Matt, discussion.
I'm gonna call for a question on that then.
Questions we call for to approve the February 18th, 2020 meeting minutes of the Water and Sewer Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous. Also, we have three action items in there. The first being to approve the first reading of an ordinance spanning the Dillon Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services. This has been reviewed by the Water and Sewer Committee and we feel it's up to date and ask for your acceptance to move forward with the ordinances.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Dan, was that Russ?
This is Matt.
Matt, okay, Matt, seconded.
It's all Matt.
Discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I read this a couple of times and, um, I, the improvement, or the changes that you made are really terrific improvements. The one part I didn't understand, I mean, I read it a couple of times, is that, uh, it's the part that has to do with, uh, there's a landowner and then you have a tenant and then possibly you have a sublet tenant. And at some point in time, um.
I think you mean page seven.
Yeah. Uh, so what is the timeline? Like, how long can a person get away with not paying their bill before they get turned over to collections? I just didn't, I can't get this.
Well, they go, they, bills go out, the meter gets read on the 25th and a couple of days after that, they go out.
They have, it goes out on the first and then you have to pay it by the, uh.
25th.
By the 25th.
And then after that, if they don't, then it goes another 10, 15?
10 days.
10?
If they don't pay by the 25th, there's a late fee. If they don't pay it by the 10th of the following month, I send them a notice. And it's another late fee. And then they have until around the 22nd, 23rd, depending on the date. And then we hand deliver a notice.
On the 22nd, on the 22nd, that's where you hand deliver the, you're gonna be shut off. Okay? And then the next day, it would be on the 23rd that you would be shut off.
Well, it just depends on where the dates fall in. But, and, but we, you know, if the temperatures are cold, we can't shut them off either, so.
Well, according to this, though, it would be the next day that, so I'm thinking that you have actually, um, or I'm thinking that it's close to 90 days.
60 days.
60 days.
Yes, close.
Give or take, it's about 60 days.
Yeah.
That they're past due before they're shut, right?
Right.
But even then, we're not totally shutting them off. If they call up and they come up with a decent excuse or payment plans. And also, how they might be able to keep it up to any future ones. If that comes up and they can convince Diane, then we can make a deal with them on that. Because we don't really wanna shut people's water off.
Yeah.
But if they don't get a hold of her, yeah, the water will go off the next day. Or somewhere in that ballpark. If it was Friday, we're probably not gonna do it on the weekend, but. Because a lot of times it does, when your water goes off, it does kind of get them enthusiastic coming down to it.
So where in that system does it, uh, does the owner, uh, whether we're talking, uh, because we did a three-tiered system here. We have the owner, we have the tenant, and we have the subtenant. Where does the owner get involved in this situation? Where did, where did they become aware of that?
They get a copy of every notice I send to the tenant. They get a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
If I send out a co, a notice to anybody that's a renter, the landlord gets a copy of that same notice.
Okay, all notices go, okay. I, I must have missed that in here. I didn't see that. Go to honor, okay. Great. Um, there's a, a little bit of a typo on page six, item four. A written notice of delinquency may be mailed to consumers with delinquent accounts that have not been, not brought, so I think you wanted to have it, that have not.
Been brought.
Dropped.
Yeah, good catch. It didn't mean double A.
Oh, okay, so they just take out one of the notch, yeah.
Let me go back to page four, please. The double A. The last sentence, one family. We should probably use the numeric one. And AA and BB as well, for consistency.
Okay, agree. And BB too?
Yes, there's a lot of 1, 1, 1, 1s. And then the same thing happens on page 11. Section 1304-100, C as in Charlie. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five lines down, or four lines down, within two weeks. Two, please.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah.
As well.
Got it. Any other discussion? Call for the question.
Questions we call for to approve the first reading of an ordinance in Dillon Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or add a mention, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous. It'll be back at the next meeting with the amendments that we've made today.
Also, we asked your approval to hire Bob Murdo's firm as bond counsel for Beaverhead Water Mainline Project. If we go up to do bonding, we need to have a bonding officer, basically. And that requires special certification, so this is the same one that we've used prior.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Dan, discussion.
Um, the budget item on this is 40,000 bucks. Uh, later discussion with the mayor and he indicated to expect something somewhat smaller than that.
Yes.
But, uh, is there any process in which we'll be able to, if, for approving Mr. Murdo to decide whether or not he's competitive with any bodies? Price wise?
There's only two, two sources in the state. He has one and two. And he made the one, the other for this last time. Yeah, there's only, there's only two that handle water sewer in the state, that's licensed in the state.
And our state bond counsel can't be used in state.
Okay. I was recommended or not.
Sounds like a pretty good game.
Some of these are. Call for question? Questions we call for to approve hiring Bob Murdo's firm as bond counsel for Beaverhead River Water Mainline Project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Take that as unanimous. The third and final item is to approve the purchase of a six-inch meter for the chemical feed building. These are updated meters, we're trying, still trying to figure out where we're losing water at, we're hoping that this will show us if we got a meter inaccuracy somewhere, so we can get this correct and get it caught up, so maybe there's a leak, it's just an error in reporting.
Love to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Matt, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, is this, uh, i- is there a place in the, uh, budget for this eight thousand dollars?
I'm trying to remember right now. It's not a line item issue, item no, because it came up after the budget was set. Okay. I couldn't remember, I'm not trying to get out of answering, I couldn't ever.
So, uh, I'm going back to...
It's coming out of Water Development Funds.
It, it, okay, so, and we do have that one that has, uh, water equipment, or water, something either, uh, there's some, there's an accountant that'll just come out of there?
All I want to do is see if they have a vote on it, and agree tonight, I'm taking it, that gives me the authority to purchase it, to get it started, but I'm also in the process, probably next month, to go to Finance Committee on amending the budget, this year's budget, and this will be an item that will amend, and that's a line item for it, because I think the price, I can't remember, if it's over five thousand, we gotta treat it differently. I can't remember this one, how much was the?
Eight thousand.
Oh, that was per...
This one, thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, we could take it out of just that one without amending it, probably easily, otherwise I'd need to amend it, so there's money in there to do it.
Boy, as with a lot of water and sewer-related services, there really isn't much of an opportunity to ever been doing it, right?
Pretty much, yeah. Because our number shows we lose about a million gallons a month, someplace, that's a good size, so...
If you, if you compare to our measurements by the meters in the house, or in the buildings, also the meter at the lagoon, what's the incoming, effluent, influence, influence is the incoming, effluent is outgoing, all those meters pretty much match, and then there's the meters that are on the wells, those are off a million gallons about, actually it's more than that, I mean, some of the numbers per month were off about five to six thousand, or five to six million gallons a month off. I haven't been able to track down as what the leak detection was to, we're thinking maybe we got some bigger sized leaks, but we never found, I mean, we found a couple leaks, but they were small, we still repaired them, you know, but it didn't phase the loss that we were showing, so the only other thing we can think of is the meters that are up there, the pretty big size, six, eight-inch meters, you know, they get, they might be inaccurate compared to our smaller meters in the houses, so we're gonna test that by buying one meter, putting it in what they call the chem, chemical feed building, that's where we put the orthal phosphate and the bleach, the chlorine into the water, uh, you get the water, the well one, well two, all both feed into the chem feed, they both have a meter on there, so we can compare the readings from the old meters with the new at that spot, and if it turns out they're off, then we can replace all the other meters with the accurate one then. That's what the plan was for doing this, why we're only doing one to test it.
Right. I'd like to commend the Water and Sewer Committee and all the work they've done, especially with the bridge and, uh, the water lines over the river, trying to get ahead of the curve before we end up in real crisis, and, uh, so it's, no pun intended, it's a heady job.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Love to approve.
Er, call for the question? Questions we call for to approve the purchase of a six-inch meter for the chemical feed building. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. I take that as unanimous. And as like I said, is there any others?
No, that completes my report, thank you.
My favorite item on the agenda, publicly comment on items of significant public interest, none on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city. Russ?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna give a plug for the Chamber Dinner Friday, they still have tickets available, it's at the Elks, good event to come and see how your local folks are awarded for all their hard work, and then a plug for next Wednesday, because Stacy's not here, the Ad hoc Community Affairs Committee will meet at noon in this room, we're still looking for some great ideas and money.
And the Chamber Dinner, social starts at five, dinner at six.
Correct.
I didn't hear if you said that, so... And the other...
Hey, move group, the German.
Second.
Been moved by Ryan, seconded by Russ, and...
Ready, ready. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Meeting adjourned.